This meeting is being recorded and summarized.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
One more time. You ready? Okay. Well, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us on this beautiful day in Douglas County, Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, for our Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting. Before I call the meeting to order, I'd like to welcome back up the wonderful Darren Kessler to provide our invocation. Darren?
Thank you. Appreciate wanting to bring this to beginning with prayer. Let's please pray. God, thank you that we can pray to a sovereign God in control of all things. And so we humbly come before you and ask for everybody in this room, what will be said, decisions to be made, opinions expressed. Lord, that it be done with an attitude of humility, to do what is best. And so we pray for those in leadership to also take their role seriously, that they come under you to be able to make decisions for the people they represent. Thank you that they're asking for this prayer now for that. And I thank you for the privilege of being here. I would ask you to bless what is done here today. In your name, Jesus, amen.
Amen, Darren. Thank you for that. So with that, I'll call the meeting to order. If you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Attorney Garcia, do we have certification of today's agenda?
You do, sir. The county attorney's office reviewed all items on the agenda, and you have appropriate jurisdiction over these matters.
Thank you. And do any commissioners have disclosures for items on this agenda today?
No, sir. Nope.
And I have none. With that, we'd like to kick it off with a special part of our ceremonies and proclamations. I'd like to invite up Corey Cohen from Engineering to introduce the Girl Scout Gold Award for Abigail Reynolds. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Corey Cohen. And I'm representing staff today to introduce a local high-achieving student, Abigail Reynolds. I'm a Douglas County Capital Improvements Project Engineer, and I'm proud to introduce Abigail and her Girl Scouts Gold Award project. In 2024, I was made aware of Abigail's project by another county employee, Joanna Miller, who knew I would love to support another young woman interested in engineering. In 2025, Abigail's project was recognized and awarded the Girl Scouts Gold Award. Over the 11 years I've been in civil engineering and construction, my career has been extremely rewarding, and I love what I do, especially in Douglas County. I look forward to working with and inspiring other young women like Abigail to become engineers. With that, I'm happy to introduce you to Abigail and her project, Gearing for Engineering.
How's everyone doing?
Good.
So my Gold Award project is called Gearing for Engineering. Before I started my project, I had to identify the issue that I wanted to address. I noticed and learned that the engineering field has the lowest female representation out of all the STEM fields. And according to the American Association of University Women, only 17% to 21% of the engineering workforce is made of women. At a local elementary school, I had a STEM teacher do drawn engineer trials, where basically she asked her students to draw an engineer, and I took all those drawings, I collected the data, and based off of that, only 14% to 21% of the drawings were of girls, which shows you how even female students, they typically drew more male engineers because they didn't see females fulfilling these roles. The root causes of these issues are many. For one, there is old stereotyping and gender roles that typically discourage females to actually become engineers. Math and science subjects can cause anxiety for female students, and there are very few role models in engineering for them. For my solution, I decided to create the Gearing for Engineering Expo. It consists of third to eighth grade students, both male and female, and each year there are 10 project ideas that students are allowed to choose from. There's a presentation and solution route, which basically allows students to explore many different engineering fields, including mechanical, environmental, structural, et cetera. Also, the submission process is completely anonymous, which allows for the removal of bias to make sure that projects are graded solely on the quality of work and not other identifying factors. I also hosted bi-weekly pre-expo workshops, which created safe and productive environments and allowed students to develop their projects and gain feedback and work with their peers. The target audience of my project was middle school students and elementary school students. Typically, if we're able to address this issue of fear of engineering at a younger age, they will go on to take the more rigorous courses in their high school years. And I also inadvertently affected the beliefs of parents and staff who doubted their students and made them more aware of the opportunities and abilities of their kids. So my project was a very long process. I started in fall of 2023. There was a training I had to go through to prepare for my Gold Award. Then I did research about what are the causes of this issue in this field. I heard from female engineers, I heard about their experiences and what challenges they faced, what advice they had for other young girls. I had to coordinate with admin at Aspen View Academy, where I hosted the inaugural expo, and I had to build my project website. Working on all of the promotional materials and advertisements was a very long process, but it was worth it to make sure that I got the message out about this new exciting event. In December of 2024, I hosted the actual expo, and it was a big success, and I officially finished start of 2025. So the important part, the numbers. Basically, the number of signings I received is over 30 students ranging from third to eighth grade, and this tripled my initial expectation. The expo podium and honorable mentions, one half of the podium was female, and the first two places were girls. So this goes to show, if you give girls the opportunity to thrive, they will. Participant feedback that I received said that all students who participated this year want to participate next year, and I also got confirmation from the principal that he wants to host this event again, except for the eighth graders who are graduating, but they can participate. For my website, which was basically the harbor for all of the resources I created, it provided the documentation guides, the judging rubrics, flyers, so if students across the world wanted to host an expo at their school, they can use these resources to do so. So I had 140-plus viewers from 26 different states, six countries, and three continents. So I was able to share my message and my information and inspiration to kids around the world. I also had the teacher rerun the drawn engineer trials, and after the expo, 51% of the engineers were female, and this is compared to the pre-expo levels of 20%. So in just one year, I was able to cause so much change in growth mindsets for these kids. There were a lot of benefits for this project for the students. For one, they learned important brainstorming techniques on how to develop projects, come up with solutions. For example, one of the prompts was to create an enclosure for an endangered species, and this is diving into environmental and structural engineering. And they had to basically come up with a solution for a real-world problem that's a current problem today. So they had to come up with various solutions, planning skills, making sure that they were effective with their time, and they also learned about the engineering design process, which is a super important aspect of engineering, where basically you come up with the problem, you sign reiterations of solutions for it, you test them, and you go back to the drawing board and make adjustments if needed. And lastly, growth mindset, not just in their ability to learn new things, but in their ability of trust in themselves, their self-confidence in engineering. My project is sustainable because that's one of the requirements for the Gold Award, and this is maintained through a promise that was made by Aspen View Academy. They plan to host this event for years to come. The expo resources will continue to be globally accessible as they're posted in Google Drive, and the website will be continued by the STEM teacher at Aspen View Academy. There was a myriad of challenges that happened for this whole process to make this a reality. Introducing this concept to a school that already had established traditions and a busy events calendar was challenging, but I got over it by explaining the importance of this opportunity and collaborating with admin to find a time for this event. I also had to convince my target audience, all these students and their parents, that this project is worthy of their time, that this is an event that they should take seriously. So I had to work hard with advertising and getting enough signups to make sure we had enough traction. This was done through relentless flyers and newsletter postings and social media presence, and I was able to get so many signups thanks to that. I also had to create a website with new software called Wix. It required a lot of research, persistence, and flexibility, but as a result, I now have a permanent house for all of the resources I created. I also gained a lot from this experience, too. It wasn't just the students learning. I learned the importance of time management and fitting into time constraints, especially if you're working on a large scale with dozens of students. That is a school-wide event. You have to be very meticulous with how you plan, and everything has to be minute by minute. Networking and reaching out to female engineers in the area, reaching out to the judges who judge the students' projects was also super important. Adapting to challenges that happened during the process of creating this event and the actual assembly itself. And I had to be able to problem solve and come up with solutions if something didn't go right the first time. And again, innovate all of the prompts that students were able to create, because I found it very important to me that I created prompts for the students that were applicable to real life. That's something that actually matters to them. Another prompt was creating flotation device for a paraplegic pet, or build a lunar colony for you and your family. These are all issues that aren't only fun, but it also applies to them in their own life, and it gives them hope for what they can do in the future. If I had to sum up the advice for my Gold Award in one sentence, I would say, find something you're truly passionate about, and stay persistent till you enact change. This project was challenging, and even though I had some rough moments with it, there were some obstacles, I was able to persevere, and because engineering is so important to me, I worked hard, and I was able to cause positive impact on my community. Thank you.
Well, Abigail, thank you, and Corey, thank you for the wonderful introduction. In this county, we are so thrilled to have women as leaders and leading at the highest levels. Actually, the head of our Public Works and Engineering Department, Janet Herman, is right in the audience. Janet, if you want to raise your hand and maybe say hi. An exceptional female that is leading, such exceptional individual that is doing great work in Public Works and Engineering. But I'll just say, as chairman of the Board of County Commissioners and as the proud father of a 19-year-old daughter, I would like to personally thank you for the powerful example that you're setting for young women around our county and beyond. Your leadership in encouraging girls to pursue STEM isn't just admirable, it's deeply impactful. You're opening doors that have too often felt closed, and in doing so, you're not just imagining a better future, you're helping to build one. I know firsthand how much it matters for young women to see someone like you, confident, curious, and courageous, standing tall in spaces where their voices are so needed. You are not waiting for permission or perfection, you are leading right now, and that is the kind of inspiration that changes lives. So on behalf of this board, our community, and as a father who wants his own daughter to chase every dream without hesitation, thank you. Keep pushing boundaries, keep lifting others, and know that you have a county behind you cheering you on every step of the way. Board?
Well, congratulations on your Gold Award. I've been involved with Boy Scouts of America before, and I've seen many, many Eagle Scout projects, and this is remarkable. I mean, you know, evaluation, synthesis, implementation, and something that I think you made very clear is going to be there that as you move on with your education, will be there for the school to continue to use. I think it's great. I mean, for goodness sakes, as I mentioned, our head of Public Works is also a engineer. She's also a female. She's found a career with it. I hope that's a career that you want to continue with, but I think it's absolutely fantastic that you're creating this opportunity for other young women. But I can't believe there aren't a couple of young men who also probably didn't get turned on to engineering and are going to be taking a hard look at it as well. So congratulations. Very well done.
Thank you.
You bet. You know, I tell Eagle Scouts, prospective Eagle Scouts, finish. Get your Eagle Scout. It's the first gift you give yourself as a man. I would say this is your first gift that you've given yourself with your Gold Crown Award, excuse me, Gold Crown, excuse me, with your Gold Star Award, and it's a gift that I believe you will appreciate many years into the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Commissioner Van Winkle?
Thank you, and I would echo those sentiments and just thank you for being here today. Thank you for receiving this recognition. Your passion for engineering and your dedication to inspiring fellow students and younger future leaders is truly remarkable, and it is an honor that we will be able to induct you into the Douglas County Hall of Fame, a new initiative that we have started this year, and you are a perfect example of the kind of person we want in our Hall of Fame, because, I mean, you're such a clearly a bright, driven leader, and you're paving the way for future innovators and engineers and just community leaders. So thank you so much.
How about another big round of applause for Abigail? So I think I see Drew asking us to maybe come down for a photo, and I hope you don't leave those doors before you talk to Janet. Maybe there's an internship in your future. I don't know. See you down there. Well, that is really special, and I have to thank our new colleague, Commissioner Kevin Van Winkle, for really putting an emphasis in his first term around highlighting the great things that are happening among our citizens in Douglas County. There are so many citizens doing awesome work, and I think we're getting to see a lot of that here in our hearing room. So thank you. With that, we'll move on to item three, which is our consent agenda. I will open it up for any citizen comment with regard to any item on our consent agenda. Is there any citizen comment? Okay, let me ask Troy online. Any citizen comment for our consent agenda?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, so with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Chair, please. The board, I do have a motion to approve all requests on all items A through X on the consent agenda.
And I will second that motion, Mr. Chairman, and there is a lot of good things in there. There's a lot of work actually happening underway right now for the fair coming up later this year, and some of that's found in here. So enthusiastically, yes.
Great. So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries unanimously. With that, we'll move on to item four, which is our regular agenda, and item four A is a resolution in support of creating a Home Rule Charter Commission. Jeff Garcia, county attorney, presenting for staff. Jeff?
Thank you, Chairman. I think it'd be best if one of the board members would read the resolution to the community.
Indeed, and I might ask our fearless Home Rule leader, Commissioner George Teal, to read the resolution for us, if you don't mind.
With pleasure. This is a resolution in support of creating a Home Rule Charter Commission introduced by the Board of County Commissioners of the county of Douglas, Colorado. Whereas the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners recognize the profound need for the county to protect itself from the harmful statewide policies adopted by the Colorado General Assembly, preserve the identity of Douglas County, and establish strong local control. Whereas pursuant to Colorado Vice Statutes 1-45-117, 1B3A, the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners adopt this resolution advocating for the creation of a Home Rule Charter Commission at the June 24th, 2025 special election. Whereas pursuant to Article 14, Section 16 of the Colorado Constitution, every county in the state has the authority to become a home rule county. Part five of Article 11 of Title 30 of the Colorado Vice Statutes prescribes the process for becoming a home rule county, including the creation of a Home Rule Charter Commission. Whereas the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners recognize Douglas County as the healthiest, safest, and most prosperous county in the state. The board further recognizes in recent years that General Assembly's policies have had a negative effect on the state, do not reflect the beliefs or identity of Douglas County, and fail to provide for the needs of Douglas County residents. Whereas, while the Home Rule Charter Commission will ultimately create Douglas County's Home Rule Charter, becoming a home rule county will grant the county an opportunity to create local control, free itself from dangerous state mandates on issues of local concern, protect and preserve Douglas County residents' constitutional rights, including gun ownership, codify historic Colorado values, and protect the land, water, and environment of Douglas County. Now, therefore, this is introduced before the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners, and the Douglas County Commissioners call on the residents of Douglas County to vote yes to the creation of a Home Rule Charter Commission at the June 24th, 2025 special election. Introduced and read this day in June 2025 in Caserac, Colorado.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. At this time, I'll open it up to the board for any questions or comments.
Happy to see it before us today and look forward to public input.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any additional comments?
Well, obviously, as the reader of this resolution introducing it before, consideration before the Board of County Commissioners, I'm very much an advocate. I believe in everything that's written here, and of course, I do encourage my colleagues, after hearing public comment, to absolutely vote yes, and I encourage all people of Douglas County to vote yes to create the Home Rule Charter Commission on the June 24th ballot.
Great. Well, thank you, Commissioner, and I would agree with that 100%. Like most citizens in Douglas County, there's been somewhat of an immediate awareness that this is really just about local control, and that at the end of the day, Home Rule grants greater local control on issues of importance to the county, whether it's public safety, property taxes, homelessness, land use, and many other issues. As a commissioner in my second term, having lived through seven years of working with the state, you know, we've had some bumps along the way. And the reality is, when I think back to the pandemic, I know that this county, based upon the after-action report that we received and got documented by a national consultant, that we ended up with the lowest numbers of hospitalizations and deaths, but the highest numbers of openings, and we helped save the economy in Douglas County, all while having to fight a state that wanted to shut us down. Memories are short, and so it's important to recall that local control matters, especially when we're monitoring an epidemiology dashboard on a daily basis and seeing that the numbers really would require us to do exactly what we did. Home Rule increases our ability to deal with issues like public health in a really local and effective way. I also think about issues like homelessness. I mean, our county has zero functional homelessness right now, no panhandling, no encampments, six unsheltered individuals in a county of 400,000. There aren't that many counties that are able to do that, but right now, we are getting $0 from the Metro Denver Homeless Initiative to address this. Many counties throughout the metro area are getting hundreds of millions of dollars to deal with homelessness, only to see those numbers go up 30% in the last two years. Local control under Home Rule increases our ability to deal with issues like homelessness, public safety, and let's not forget immigration. You know, in a state where we saw the homeless numbers go from 5,000 to 6,500 in Denver, and 40,000 illegal immigrants from Venezuela flooding into our borders, it wasn't a compassionate response to beckon them to a cold-weather climate with no resources. This county acted swiftly, but because of state sanctuary laws and many of the sanctuary laws in Denver, it is nearly impossible for us to coordinate well with the federal government, which is frankly what we swore an oath under the Constitution to uphold. So we do believe, I believe, that our citizens are actively enthusiastic around supporting increased immigration enforcement, reducing homelessness to absolute zero, making sure we can maintain our local public health department, and then reduce property taxes. We've had to sue the state so often to make sure that our citizens are not paying an exorbitant amount in property taxes. And again, this is a county that returned nearly $38 million back to the citizens of Douglas County, because our view here is we don't need their money. We have enough. We have zero debt. We have a balanced budget, and we're able to do a lot of good things without increasing taxes or taking more money that frankly we don't believe belongs in the hands of government. Instead of having to sue the state to ensure economic freedom for our citizens, I believe that Home Rule will allow us as a local control county to really provide that economic relief that is so critical in a time when people can't really buy bread or eggs or afford their rent payment. So I'm enthusiastic support of this resolution and would really just like to acknowledge the leadership of my colleague, who has been championing this issue for not just today, not just a few weeks or a few months, but for literally years. So thank you, sir, and look forward to hopefully a favorable vote today. Any other comments? Okay, with that, I do want to open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room? And if you do have citizen comment, if you want to just line up at the podium, state your name and where you're from, you'll have three minutes apiece to make your comments. And sir, if you want to just state your name and where you're from, we'll start with you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm Bob Marshall. I'm from Island Ranch. And, you know, this body is starting to become as ridiculous as the Berkeley City Council in the 1980s of doing nuclear-free zones, and we don't like the policy of the nation, so we're going to carve ourselves out when you can't. Your resolution says waiving out of firearm laws. I haven't heard one law that you've actually said you could get out of. Sheriff Reams in Weld County is one of the most conservative sheriffs in the entire state in a home rule county, and he's made it clear, they have to follow the law. They have to follow the state law. So I don't understand this. We already know you support Home Rule. You put it on the ballot by a unanimous decision in 90 seconds. So I don't understand why you need to do this. You sent out a white book using taxpayer money as supposedly a neutral informational piece. It was a propaganda piece. In fact, I had the head of the Tabor Defense Organization and Jeff Coe come to a town hall and ask if I could help sponsor legislation to stop that kind of behavior, because she was upset that Jefferson County was using taxpayer money to overturn Tabor. My response to her is nobody in power likes good governance. Doesn't matter if it's the Democrats or Republicans, whoever controls local government doesn't like good governance, and we're seeing that here. And what basis do you have for this resolution? Your own survey from the first month of May said 54% of the people responded opposed it, only 44% supported it, and it was a biased survey. When I answered and said I work for the government, the state government, I was banned from taking it, and everyone in my household, which includes my Navy-deployed daughter, we won't even be able to vote in this election and would vote against it, but she's under the ice. But they would make sure if this was in 2026, in a normal general election, she'd be able to vote and have her voice heard. You don't want everybody's voices to be heard. That's why we're doing it in an off-year election with a special election. And finally, the grassroots part of it, again, the numbers don't show some massive amount of grassroots support for this Home Rule initiative, and the money don't lie either. We have a 501(c)(4) dark money outfit that's spending money that won't report, but the one entity that's pro Home Rule that did report, five donors, five total donors. Three from business entities outside Douglas County with interests here donated 110,000, and two individuals, one the spouse of a commissioner, one a spouse of another developer here in Douglas County. Meanwhile, the opposition, 300, almost 300 individuals, almost all of them from Douglas County, raised $30,000. all of them from Douglas County, raised thirty thousand dollars, which is grassroots support and which is outside money trying to buy the county. It's very disturbing. So again, I see I'm over and I appreciate it, but the resolution seems to be inept. We know what your position is, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next citizen. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Ellen Testland, and I am an attorney here, and I'm going to actually piggyback on what he said, but ask it in a question. The survey that you commissioned and we paid for, question thirty nine, vote on a Home Rule Charter for Douglas County, vote against, fifty four percent. Therefore, I ask you, why did we spend all this money on the, all the election and paperwork, everything for you to move forward with this when fifty four percent of your constituents said they did not want to vote for a Home Rule Commission? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
That was a question.
Oh, thank you. Next citizen.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Aiko Browning, and I'm a constituent and a taxpayer. I'd like to begin with a reading. The smaller the society, the fewer probably will be the distinct parties and interests composing it. The fewer the distinct parties and interests, the more frequently will a majority be found of the same party, and the smaller the number of individuals composing a majority and the smaller the compass within which they are placed, the more easily they will concert and execute their plans of oppression. This is by James Madison from Federalist Ten. I believe this has relevance to what's happening in Douglas County in two thousand and twenty five. So you guys say you're all about local control, getting power closest to the people, right? Well, that's great. I'm all for power closest to people, power to the people. But when you were at the Larkspur meeting, having that discussion, and you were asked by the Larkspur Council about the opportunity to move from three to five county commissioners for better representation, you were not, you were not in favor of that. Here's the audio.
Five districts with five commissioners, two of those commissioners are going to be Democrats because Highlands Ranch is a hundred and twenty seven thousand people. Just ask Stephanie, she'll tell you all about it. And you will get at least one Democrat elected Commissioner. Thank you.
So you're not for five commissioners because you'd get a Democrat elected Commissioner. So it doesn't seem like you're actually all for best constituent representation. I live in Highlands Ranch. I would like to have better representation. You guys are elected at large, and the rural conservative votes wash out the more suburban votes. For better constituent representation, we would go to five commissioners elected regionally, not at large, and Home Rule could potentially do that. But you know what? I don't trust you guys because you sprung this on us on March twenty fifth. You could have done this the right way, like Weld County did it in nineteen seventy five with lots of citizen engagement, thirty plus public meetings. Instead, you spring this on us on March twenty fifth after a ninety second rubber stamp meeting at which you congratulate each other and wow, this great moment for Douglas County. So you say you're all about local control, but what you're really about is Commissioner control. You're about keeping control at your level. I think you want to lock in power by making it in the county commission that there's only three commissioners and they're elected at large as they are to lock this in and lock out Democratic representation, and that is anti Little D Democratic, and I oppose this, and I encourage everybody to vote no on Home Rule. If you've got your ballot in hand and you're trying to figure out how to fill out your ballot, please visit StopDougCoPowerGrab.com. There's a nice voter guide with bios for petition candidates. Please vote no on Home Rule. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner, do you have a point of order? Okay. Next citizen.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm William Fornia from Lone Tree, Colorado. I've lived in about six different states, Alabama, Washington State, Michigan, Maine, California, and for the last thirty five years in Colorado, and I've lived in three other counties in Colorado, moved down to Douglas County about two years ago, and I didn't realize how goofy this all is. I just, you just don't need to do this. We gotta, I love the state of Colorado. I don't agree with every law they pass, but I don't want to have to deal with unique laws for Douglas County or nullification of Colorado. So I really, I know it's too late to change your minds, but I certainly hope this doesn't pass. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here.
My name is Kevin Duffy. I'm a thirty year resident here in Castle Rock. I want to talk about four things. First thing I want to do is challenge Jeff Garcia. Jeff, last time I confronted you on this, I asked you for a copy of the report that your predecessor did, Lance Ingle, and you to make that public because he did an excellent job showing the pros and cons when this came up before the Board of County Commissioners because this is not the first time it has been discussed. This is just the first time that the Commissioners tried to ramrod this down the citizens. So I'm going to ask you again, have you found that report and are you going to make it public? Because Jeff, because Lance Ingles did an excellent job on that report, and I would like to see it, and I think every voter in this county should have an opportunity to read that report because it was nonbiased. It showed both the pros and cons. Second thing I want to talk about is the, I got my ballot, I got my white little pamphlet in there. I'm very confused about something. It says right in there that this, the charter will be made up of citizens of Douglas County that, that, that the citizens elect that will be separate and have the Commissioners, Board of County Commissioners will have no control over or no say over. But yet you guys are all running to be on that very charter. So that can't be. You can't be on this charter and be, and be impartial because obviously you guys are not impartial. So this whole election is going to be a sham if any one of you makes it on that charter. Third thing I want to bring up, I'm a proud native of Colorado. I've lived here my entire life, as all my four brothers and sisters have. The language that you're using, I am a history, I'm a history buff. I love history. The very language that you people are using to break away from the state of Colorado is secession language. You literally are talking about Douglas County seceding from the state of Colorado because you don't want to follow the Constitution of the state of Colorado, which says that we are to follow state legislation and the laws that our legislators make. If you don't like the laws, that's fine. I don't like a lot of them either, so we'll vote on it. We'll vote them out, but as it stands right now, you guys are trying to secede Douglas County from the state of Colorado, and that's wrong. And the last thing I want to bring up is, I found it very interesting, it was brought up by Bob, that the people who are donating money to your support of this, the businesses, the developers that are donating money, it makes me question this. We give you Home Rule, which means you guys are in charge of everything, and you have say over everything, including our open space. How much of our open space is all of a sudden going to be started being whittled away and be given to these developers so they can develop? That's wrong. And then I question is, when you guys are out of office?
And sir, you are over time. So we're going to allow other citizens to speak. Thank you, sir. Next citizen, please.
My name is Barrett Roth. I live in Castle Pines. I think first I'd like to call attention to the fact that when you all think of these ideas, it ends up with me and a shirt this color, and nobody wants that. So please, please stop making us do this. I want to talk about the five hundred thousand dollars you're spending on this election and the disingenuous talking points you had when you started talking about the Home Rule Resolution. You talk about that you need Home Rule to support law enforcement. Five hundred thousand dollars would pay for six new Douglas County Sheriff's deputies. I would like to see that. I'm a father, too. I don't know if you've driven north of Founder's Parkway to Ridggate anytime recently. I would like to see at least one new deputy in that stretch of road. Six of them would be great. That's something we could do with the money you've wasted. You talk about, excuse me, sorry, you talk about bringing homelessness down to functionally zero. If there are four homeless people in Douglas County, you could give each of them a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars to end homelessness. That is how much money you were wasting. But the biggest thing, the thing I've heard from all three of you at different times is that you hate taxes. I get it. I don't necessarily care for them either. You want to give money back to people. You think you've gotten too much, you want to give it back. It doesn't belong in the hands of government. You've wasted five hundred thousand dollars. You could give each small business in Douglas County a one thousand dollar tax rebate with that money. Instead, you decided not to wait until November, two thousand and twenty five. It's currently June. It's four or five months away. If this is so important, why can it not wait and be free and not be done on the backs of taxpayers?
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Additional citizen comment? Yes, sir.
So I'm David John. I'm from Larkspur, and my first question is, what, what is wrong with the way we operate today? Why do we need to change the Home Rule? Douglas County was established in eighteen sixty one. You're saying how great it is today, everything's fine. So why the sudden change? Why do we have to change things all of a sudden in a matter of a few months? There is no rush. These things, this state controlled stuff, they're right. You cannot override the state law. If the state decides that everybody has to wear a mask because of some massive pandemic, you can opt out of it. That's the state's interest, the state's rights. In the past, the Supreme Court has always ruled for the state. So quit spreading the lies. And as far as the state limiting you guys from giving us money back, that's BS. Your assessor on next door stated two ways to be able to give us money back, so they are not preventing you from giving us money back. And I will reiterate your brochure, independence. The Charter Commission will be independent of the Board of County Commissioners. That's your brochure. So you have the three Commissioners, you have the assessor, you have the treasurer running for these positions to create the Charter Commission. That's the fox in the hen house scenario, period. It's a conflict. Choose which job you want. I will vote for you if you resign now. Otherwise, nowhere are you getting my vote or from the majority of the folks in this county. We've had enough of you trying to enrich yourselves and give yourselves more power so you can just ram things down our throat, including primitive camping in Sandstone Ranch. How crazy is that? Let's put, why don't we just take a match and light it inside a dynamite factory to see what's in there? That's what you're doing. That is crazy. It's these crazy and insane proposals that make us all distrust you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, ma'am.
Jill Campbell, nine four four seven, Carwell Park Place, Highlands Ranch, eight oh one two nine, Colorado. Want my phone number, email? Go ahead. I have no friends in Douglas County, so I'm good, but the firefighters sure saved my flood the other night. God bless those good men. The civil servants, the ones hardly paid a penny, and we come up here and complain, but we can complain, but they're giving us a democratic choice to vote. Isn't that nice? We can vote. So the outcome is a democracy, a vote that gives us the freedom to assess whether we want this or not, and the majority rules, right? They're not the majority. They're actually the minority. Thank you, A. Bladen, George Dale, and Kevin Van Winkle. To stand in the front of this chaos, if you didn't see Los Angeles last night, they enacted two thousand or some crazy number of National Guard and seven hundred Marines. They're setting cars on fire, massive closing highways, I mean blocking highways, and so they're burning flags, American flags, and hoisting the other nation's flags, and I won't mention which one. So then we've got also chaos with our economics. We've got tariffs at the highest level, and, and you won't get your parts for autos unless you have some secret way to sneak it in. We've got lots of blocking with Navy, Air Force, Marines. And I'll say this, this clearly, thank you for giving me the option to opt out of the craziness of Denver and the massive expenses of the ones dancing on the streets of Broadway that I videotaped. You want to see it, come talk to me. You want to pay for that? It'll be hefty fine on your house, that's for sure. It's hard to get all these, the loss we had, and I'm not being trite. I served those men four years, and I cried with the men, and I took care of eleven people pandemic. They were employed, welders, nurses, CNAs that lost on the streets, five hundred hotels, the coldest winter and the hottest summer of two thousand and twenty two. I was on five points, and I served with the men. We did outreaches on Martin Luther King, and the privilege of our county is we have no debt. So it is our choice, and we can embrace the debt of the forty thousand immigrants and a massive immigration and the ICE raids, and if you didn't see that, New York and LA, that's why the riots and the protests on the streets of Los Angeles and New York. So we saw Minnesota burn, a couple, and the firefighters and the police, let's protect them and their good families. Let's stand with the civil servants. You know that we are at the highest threat of national terrorists, and my best friend, the one I would have married, Officer Lundey from Collar Springs, went, he's a SWAT agent, twenty two years detective. I flew in, I thought he would have, I think we would have married had he not gone to the border. Thank God for the USA, and I say, I'm proud to be an American where at least I know I'm free, even though I was jailed last couple nights ago. Thank God I couldn't bed. I got a flood in my house, but hey, we'll work it out. I got court case. It'll be fun. We make mistakes, even civil servants. I'm innocent. So thank God I'm an American where I know at least I'm free, and I won't forget the men who gave that right to me, who gave their price of their lives, and my children stand three years I haven't seen my fighter jet pilots.
Thank you so much for your comment. We're at time. Thank you for your comments. Any additional citizen comment?
I appreciate it.
And we are getting close to two thirty, our land use meeting. If you do have additional citizen comment, if you want to line up close to the podium, we do welcome those comments.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and citizens of Douglas County. My name is Kim Keen. I live in Larkspur, and I'm reading from a document that was sent from the Republicans to the Commissioners. Good evening, patriots. Our amazing Commissioners, sorry, it's a fine print, are going through with the Home Rule Initiative. I have the slates, they have picked to run for the Charter broken out by their district listed below. Please find the invitation to the press conference and luncheon tomorrow at the Douglas County Government Offices here. We will need twenty five, we will all need twenty five signatures on our, on our petitions from within our district to get put on the ballot. Does anybody care to comment on this document with the names?
Ma'am, it's not time for questioning if you want to just make your citizen comment.
So the point is, the people that you are appointing to run on the Charter Commission were all preplanned out before you ever came up with this idea. I wouldn't be surprised if the Charter were already written. I'm guessing it is, and that the reason that the three Commissioners and the Treasurer and the County Assessor are all running for these positions is because they're just going to ram it down the throats of whoever else ends up on this Charter Commission. But I don't think that's going to happen because it seems like pretty much everybody that I've talked to is voting no. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Additional citizen comment? Yes, sir. If you want to just state your name and where you're from.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Gary Wood, Larkspur, and I'd like to point out that every time I'm up here, it costs me four to six hundred dollars to be here. At least you guys get paid to listen to me. First of all, I'd like to stipulate, as noted earlier at the last business meeting, I am not an expert on surveys. Therefore, allow me, please, to apologize for any way that I may have misspoke about the survey. Now, I want to be perfectly clear about something was brought up at that point in time. At no time have I ever criticized the Commissioners' wildfire preparations and contingency planning. As a matter of fact, I applaud and approve those and think you guys have gone above and beyond, and I appreciate every effort, as the Boy Scouts say, to be prepared. That helicopter thing is awesome, but I don't ever want to see it over my community. In that vein, in seventeen thirty five, Benjamin Franklin wrote a really, really famous phrase, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." The helicopter mitigation and all that kind of thing are cure. What we want you to do for the sixteen plus thousand What we want you to do for the 16-plus thousand Larkspur residents and beyond, what we're asking for is for you to exercise a Franklarian ounce of prevention with no camping on Sandstone. Do not expose us to fire. And by the way, when Franklin wrote that, he was specifically addressing to fire prevention. And so that is my request today. Stop this. Assure us that you're not going to put us at risk with camping on Sandstone. Very briefly, a couple of weeks ago, the television station out of Colorado Springs noted that the Colorado Forest, the U.S. Forest Service noted that there were 24 abandoned campfire sites in the National Forest. If you think that the people are going to put on the Sandstone--
And sir, I hate to interrupt you, but this is a resolution in support of home rule. And I think you're speaking on a separate issue. So if you can tie your comments to this agenda item, we'd appreciate it. But I thank you for your comments.
Boy, thank you.
I don't mean to cut you off. You're welcome to talk about this resolution. And then we will have citizen comment briefly at the end if we do have time. Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir? Yes, please, please, yes.
So my name is Chuck Ruddy. I live in Larkspur. And I too have concerns. I've come to multiple Commissioners' meetings based on the Sandstone Ranch that I'm totally opposed to. But it kind of ties into the resolution you're talking to now. You, in many of the meetings that I've been to, you keep telling us that you're going to wait till you put out the survey and see what the other people of Douglas County feel about camping. Their primitive camping at Sandstone or on open spaces. And the vagueness that was put on that survey was so poor. It just says camping in amenities. It didn't deal with camping in open spaces. So you're asking, you know, you've, I've deteriorated the trust that I have in you gentlemen that what we're hearing about home rule is truthful when what we've heard from the past, from your comments, have not been true to what you said you were going to do. So with that, it would be very difficult to vote yes on this resolution. And I'm very sorry for that because there's many good things that I've seen, the advertisements about home rule that really excite me. But there's a trust factor that's been destroyed. And I think that's happened with many people within our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any additional citizen comment? Any additional citizen comment? Okay, not seeing any more in the room. Is there any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment on this item 4A and bring it back to the board for further discussion and/or a motion.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for all the public comment. A couple of points to address now that we have the opportunity to somewhat respond. First of all, overseas military, overseas citizens, military, whether, no matter where they're stationed, should have received a ballot. And if they didn't, we can expedite a process for that, I believe, through our clerk's office.
I'm going to call for order. We did have citizen comment, and we are going to bring it back to the board. And if you do disrupt a meeting, unfortunately, we will have to get a little bit more involved. Commissioner?
I'm just saying, all overseas military should have received a ballot. And it is completely inaccurate to imply that we did not send ballots to every voter of Douglas County, regardless of age, where they live, whether in the military or not, because that process was done, and that was done not through the county Commissioners' office, but through the clerk's office, as they do for all elections. As far as open space goes, I actually think it would be a good protection for the open space of Douglas County to include that in the home rule charter. Right now, for example, like the camping at Sandstone, for example, if a, if the Commissioners say we should have camping at Sandstone, then camping opens at Sandstone. But if there's something in the county charter, for example, then that power would be removed from us, the Commissioners, and would be in the county charter, which oversight, which is above and beyond the County Commissioners themselves. And I would hope no trust would be broken over Sandstone camping, considering I've been here for, I guess, seven months now. And it still hasn't risen to the level of even appearing on our agenda as a topic to go forward with. Sandstone camping, there is no camping at Sandstone. The folks that live in the area rose up and made their voice heard. And us County Commissioners, we put a pause on any plans whatsoever to move forward with Sandstone camping since, I think prior to even me joining the board, the brakes were hit on those plans. So I just hope that we do pass this resolution today. A government closer to the people has been shown time and time again to be more responsive, more transparent, more efficient, and far more responsive and efficient to the taxpayers, to the families, than faraway policymakers, faraway politicians in Washington, D.C. and in Denver. We do need, there is a need. Douglas County is a strong county. We are a healthy county. And we want, I for one, want to keep Douglas County strong. And the home rule charter, it's not something completely out of left field. I heard it called secessionist in the way of the South during the Civil War. That is completely absurd. It is in the Constitution. And there are five other counties that have availed themselves to the benefits of home rule local authority. And so I think I will leave it at that and hope that we can count on this well-written policy to be passed.
Thank you, Commissioner. Additional comments by the board of County Commissioners?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, obviously, I am a proponent of this resolution. I do believe we should pass it. The reality is, I mean, listen, I get it. There is a very vocal minority that is very opposed to home rule. You hear them today. We know, I mean, look, they're all wearing the same T-shirt, for God's sakes. I mean, they are organized to oppose this. And if you listen to why, it's because they don't trust the majority of people in Douglas County to decide for themselves. State, 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 we heard over and over and over again. And we heard, we don't trust the people of Douglas County. And of course, they don't trust the people of Douglas County. They're a very loud vocal minority. There is a silent majority in this county that does want local control, does want us to do everything we can. And it's, it's the couple that I spoke to when I was tardy coming in for the meeting, just out in the hallway. I asked them, listen, you're talking to me right now. You can do that in this building. Can you go down to the governor's mansion and get ahold of the governor? Can you just walk right in? Can you walk right into the state Capitol and go grab, this time of year, when the legislature is out of session, and just go grab a state representative? But here in the county, you know, we're, we're full-time. We're 24/7. We're 12 months out of the year. And the reality is, yeah, this is the place where you can come. And, you know, Dr. Browning, you know, you and I were joking around before the meeting. And you know where to find me. That's what home, that's what home rule is. That's the benefits of local control. That is what the resolution expresses today. I speak in favor of the resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I would agree with my colleagues, certainly appreciate all of the citizen comment. It's not lost on me that, you know, if you're an organized liberal Democrat, you're probably pretty concerned. So we've heard you. We know you're here. We're continuing to hear that. But what's surprising to me is that this is a county that has been governed by conservatives and is the healthiest, wealthiest, and wisest in the state by a lot, according to U.S. News. I think we've done a pretty good job forming a new judicial district, a new health department, making sure that we are, again, the safest place to raise a family and to have a business. So I like that we've done that. I don't think the state has kept us safe or prevented wildfires in the way that our citizens expect us to. So I'm going to support my colleagues in this resolution and stand with the 65% of citizens that said they had a medium to high interest in greater local control. This is about local control, and I think local control makes a lot of sense. Any other comments or questions from the board or a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve a resolution in support of creating a home rule Charter Commission.
It is an honor and a privilege to second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries unanimously. With that, we'll move on to item five, which is citizen comment, organization comments, if time allows. We are a bit over time already, five minutes late for our public hearing. But I do want to make sure we have a little bit of time for citizen comment if there's still some things you'd like to say. At this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than those that appeared on today's agenda. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. Again, as always, please state your name and where you reside. Prior to making comments, you will have up to three minutes to do so. Again, any disruptive behavior, such as impeding officials, refusing to leave when asked, or attempting to disrupt a public meeting, can result in criminal charges. Commissioner comments, if any, will follow all citizens' comments. With that, we'll open it up for citizen comment. Yes, sir?
My name is Alan Whitten from Highlands Ranch. When the Douglas County Commissioners decided to rename Lucet Boulevard to Kendrick Castillo Way last year, it didn't seem like the right thing to do, but I honestly wasn't quite sure why I felt that way. Kendrick was a hero in every sense, and it is right to honor him and keep his memory alive. So that wasn't it. The cost and business impacts were significant. There was 150,000 for the C-470 signs and a minimum of 30,000 for some lighted signs. Excuse me. Highlands Ranch Metro District objected and proposed some alternatives. Those also influenced me, but they, it wasn't enough for me to speak out. How can you object to honoring Kendrick without seeming heartless? But after the latest school shooting, it hit me. Our County Commissioners have offered up a symbolic road name, but actually enact policies directly in conflict. Kendrick's sacrifice was heroic, but it should not have been necessary. That's what was wrong in my mind. Kendrick was killed in May 2019. Prior to that, in March 2019, the Commissioners had directed the county to not enforce the red flag law. But that took, then they took even more actions after the shooting. In June 2022, they raised seizing Daniels Park because Denver prohibited carrying concealed weapons in city parks. The Commissioners opted out of the state law prohibiting firearms in designated sensitive areas with the statements, "We are a nation that was built on the principle of the right to keep and bear arms." "Refer to Douglas County as a constitutional county." "And emphasize that opting out allows visitors to protect themselves as they choose." That was May 2024. Now they're pushing home rule to chart our own course and adopt common sense gun regulations that probably do allow greater freedom for people here in the county. One Commissioner stated, "I think you want all of your neighbors to be armed." For five years, the Douglas County Commissioners have taken action after action to protect access to guns. None of them would protect kids like Kendrick when it could have made the difference between honoring him as a hero with a road name or watching him graduate with his classmates. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional comment? Yes, ma'am. I know we've seen you, but now we're in citizen comments, so technically you're allowed to comment. Yes? No, it's fine.
I was seeing to fade away with my dreams of writing music. My apologies. So I, I think you took that out of context, what Abe Layden said, that you want every one of your neighbors to. And I'll go back, and we'll come back to that statement. So the unrest across the nation looks like a civil war, doesn't it? It hasn't hit our state yet that way, but we do have protests in Aurora supporting the Hispanic community of immigration deportation that's happening with the ICE raids in New York and in Los Angeles. They are using tactics, guests, and other things to disperse crowds, huge, if you have not seen the news. It's not about holding a gun for the right of, you know, fun sometimes. I want to applaud Abigail. Is it Abigail? What was her, Reynolds? The engineer that spoke at the beginning, the woman with such dignity and integrity. I was just talking to someone. I have no role model to look at as a woman, except my engineer daughter-in-law, mechanical engineer, who now is, has eight years T-38 fighter pilot trainer. Trained those men that shot down 329 drones eight months ago with Israel Jordan and America. And it hit Netanyahu's military base, and it responded. Netanyahu, Israel responded by destroying Iranian artillery. Korea and Iran have been given more and more liberty and making more race, the nuclear arms race. If Putin didn't put that in my face at 15 at Overland High School in the essays I write, wrote at 15, what would you do, Putin? Because Chernobyl just exploded in 1986. If you don't remember that, chaos and 2,000 dead from nuclear radiation in one minute. Well, we've got a nation that protests against, you know, our own universities. I don't need to mention religion, anything. It's hate. It's not about religion anymore. It's not about anything but the hate of one another, the hate of repulsiveness of the humanity we're living. The rapes and the murders and the men who have to stand and clean that shit up. Oh, sorry, crap. And it is crap. So as we look, and my daughter-in-law, I'm proud to be an American. My children, my son stood by, his wife left college at 20 so she could fulfill her dreams and enter the Air Force, graduated with mechanical engineering degree at Brigham Young University. And she, they married in Florida, moved to Mississippi, spent seven, seven months, six months there, and took two cars and drove to Texas while she trained for eight more months on the fighter pilot T-38. Seven minutes now, they moved after eight years of training men on the fighter pilot that I said defended eight months ago in the air with Jordan and Israel. She is now a B-6 stealth trainer, bomber, training the men on that. Yes, engineers, women, somehow we make a little difference. We make the men, too. That's amazing.
Thank you very much. And sir, I think you had a woman right behind you ready to comment?
You can go ahead, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
And I'll be very brief. As was observed at the last business meeting, it was suggested there were but three of us who care about Sandstone. I'd like to say right now, right here in front of you, I'm standing representing 1,500 petition signatures opposed to camping on Sandstone. I'm representing a fire department that doesn't want camping on Sandstone. I am representing a water board and a metro board that doesn't want camping on Sandstone and several homeowners associations, including in King Ranch and Hidden Valley. It's not me. It's our community. We don't want to be exposed to these unnecessary fire dangers. Again, we're asking you, please exercise an ounce of prevention and stop the camping on Sandstone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we'll take, this will be the last citizen comment. We'll do a five-minute recess and then reset for our public hearing. Yes, ma'am?
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Ako Browning. I'm a constituent and a taxpayer. So first, I would like to second that gentleman's sentiment that I oppose camping on Sandstone. It's a question of competing interests, right? You've got scouts who want to camp, and you've got people who don't want their homes to burn down. And there's other places where scouts can camp. So I oppose camping on Sandstone. Please take this in consideration. Next, I'd like to add a reading. "Men of factious tempers, of local prejudices or of sinister designs may, by intrigue, by corruption, or by other means, first obtain the suffrages and then betray the interests of the people." That's by James Madison in Federalist 10. And I believe this has relevance to what's happening on the dais today. So when you consider the funding for the Yes on Home Rule Issues Committee, you get five whole total donors, so that's a silent majority for you, right? And three of which are large-dollar donors that don't even live in Douglas County. So you've got Ventana Capital in Englewood, Colorado. You've got the Westside Property Investment Company in Glendale, Colorado. And Ventana did $50,000. Westside Property did $10,000. And then you've got the Conde Harbor Irrevocable Trust. Who's behind that? And they did $50,000 for Yes on Home Rule. And there's two small-dollar donors, one of whom is the spouse of a Commissioner. So you got to wonder, who-- you got to wonder, who do the commissioners work for? Do they work for the people of Douglas County? Or do they work for property interests? And could Home Rule and increased land use power to delegate land, could that tie in to proper development companies and their interests? So who do you guys work for? Also, water interests, right? So you have increased water rights with Home Rule. And there's certain groups of individuals, including RWR, who have an interest in diverting San Luis Valley water to Douglas County. And that would ruin the farmers in San Luis Valley. We shouldn't be taking water and ruining people's farms. So please think about, who do the commissioners work for? Go to Tracer and look up the donors. In contrast, if you look at Stop the Power Grab, there are more than 300 donations, most of which are small dollar donations, on average $88. That is grassroots. We are the people of Douglas County. As much as you like to believe that Highlands Ranch aren't your constituents, we're your constituents. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. So I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comment. Thank you. Is there any online? We are at time on citizen comment. So I'm going to close that and then bring it back to, unless there is, I guess, I will check if there, Troy, do we have anybody online?
Sir, I have no online comment.
Okay, I thought you said that. No problem. So I'll go ahead and close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any commissioner comments at this time.
No comments. We always appreciate citizen comments. We do usually ask them to be factual, but they're always appreciated.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ben Winkle?
I know we're, I know we're short on time. But the Lucent Corporation doesn't exist anymore. Kendrick Castillo is a hero of our community. I happen to be very close with the family and happen to have a very strong track record of passing the state's most impactful school safety bills. And I continue with that passion today. So do not appreciate being disparaged in that manner, nor Kendrick Castillo.
Thank you, Commissioner Ben Winkle. And I would echo that sentiment. You know, obviously, that day was a couple of months into my first term. And it's important for citizens to recall the work of all community partners, especially citizens, the Castillo family, and the county, who contributed $13 million immediately, which we had never done before, partnering with the Board of Education to make sure we had physical school security, mental health, and SROs. Fast forward to today, and Douglas County has the highest number of school resource officers of any county in the state. It's the good news you will never hear about or read about because we haven't had another catastrophic shooting. So again, I think keeping comments to the facts is an important issue. Don't expect everybody to know the history, but it is important to us. And we want to honor, not disparage, Kendrick Castillo and his family. With that, I'll ask if there's any other business, any other business before the board today. Okay. And for the county manager, anything from the county manager? Okay. County manager has a wonderful county manager report with all the details associated with everything else the county is working on in the packet. So we are going to do about a five-minute recess to reset for the public hearing. The next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, June 24th, at 2025 at 1:30 PM. We are adjourned.